Before we move into the official agenda, I would like to have a moment of silence for the devastating tragedy that happened yesterday. Our thoughts and prayers and deepest condolences go to the Whoard Carpenter families, their loved ones, teachers, students, and friends during this incredibly difficult time. We want to express our thanks to all of our first responders for their efforts and to Chief Bennett and his department for their ongoing investigation. We will now move into our official agenda. The first item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Motion by Mr. Collins?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting 6/9/2022, the special meeting 6/15/2022, the approval of minutes from the executive session June 9/2022, the executive session June 15/2022. I need a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Collins?
Second. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson?
Good evening. Just a few items for tonight. I have four resignations first. Mark Souza, effective June 24/2022, custodian nights at community. Linda Fergol, effective June 30/2022, MLL and Tier III ELA coordinator. Kaitlin Tebow, effective June 30/2022, Math Essentials one year at McCourt. And Michelle Cole, effective June 30/2022, kindergarten at community. Additionally, I have three unpaid personnel leave of absences for the 2022-2023 school year. First is Gretchen Petrie, special educator at Garvin Elementary. The second is Tamar Chobayan, STEM teacher at Cumberland High School. And Carolyn LaFort, paraprofessional at Cumberland Hill.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting on June 23/2022. Report out of executive session votes. There are no votes to report out. And the next item is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Collins? Second by Mr. DeMonica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Evening, Madam Chair. Just two quick ones. As you know, school ending, so a lot of excited folks are leaving the schools for the summer vacation. But with that comes also a great deal of work for us with school construction, and that's really going to pick up speeds. I'll give you an update and some positive doings. Next week, when you, who can come to the meeting on Monday, we're going to go on a brief tour, if you want an optional tour. You'll see floors going in or in, you'll see ceilings in, you'll see painting, you will see heaters going in, electrical work being completed. It's all coming together, so it's really exciting. The front door now has the Secure Vestibule installed, so it's really coming along. It's on schedule. And we had our weekly meeting today with the builders and the architects, and it's all looking good as far as Cumberland Hill. Also, at the same time, we had a bid opening the other day for Phase One of Ashton and Community, and that is on your agenda from Monday to consider. That's also good news. And lastly, the bid opening for Garvin is July 15, so we'll also get news on Garvin as well. So as busy as it has been, it'll get busier as now we're moving, as you know. You know, Cumberland Hill back to their home and Garvin up here. That's all happening at the same time as well.
When did you say that?
Yeah, we have scheduled right now a meeting of the building committee followed by meeting of the school committee. We have an optional tour for anyone who wants to go on a tour before the building committee meeting at around 5:15, 5:10, thereabouts. And we'll take folks around the building and show you where we are. That's optional. Of course, if you want a tour another time, just let me know and I'll take you around if you want to walk the building. But it really has come a long way.
I also wanted to mention, Dr. Thornton, about the emotional support that we have available to the community as well. So I'm just reading from your email that there's a drop-in center at North Cumberland Middle School available on Friday, June 24, from 9:00 a.m. to noon for anyone. It does not need to be someone who's a student in the school that may need to talk to someone about the tragedy that's happened. Anything else? Anything else, Dr. Thornton?
All set, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, starting with fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening, the rest of the school committee here. So we, the fiscal subcommittee met this evening. There were no payment of the bills. Couple things. Facilities was discussed tonight. Nothing major, but the facilities department is going into the summer plan, so today's the last day of school for the teachers and the students. But they go full boat getting the school ready for next year. Ready for next year, so they're going to be working summer, going throughout the summer to get the schools ready for next year. I wrote down, as Mr. DeJesus was talking about that, I wrote down Belichick's quote there, no days off for the facilities department. And there are three openings in the facilities for the night shift, so if anybody knows somebody who is interested, they can apply through the Cumberland Schools website. We have 16 resolutions this evening. Well, actually seventeen technically. Sixteen separate resolutions, all passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero. And we do have the amended budget to present to the full committee. This passed fiscal subcommittee two to one. Ms. Smith opposed. And that's it for the fiscal management subcommittee this evening. Thank you. And there's no payment of the bills.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorello?
Unfortunately, policy was not able to meet. We will definitely be meeting in July. We have a lot on our agenda or on our to-do list.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Achievement and communications subcommittee update, same as Mr. Fiorello. But we are hoping to meet in July. I know one of the big items we want to look at is the strategic plan for the district and making sure that we're able to communicate that, understand it and communicate that. Next on, next item is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Ms. Rogalski?
District Health and Wellness doesn't meet again until fall.
Next on the agenda is comments from the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move to new business. Item A, discussion regarding the Alphabet's before-after-school program for 2022-2023.
Madam Chair, good evening. Last meeting of Alphabet was requested to come to the committee, so they came tonight. So I would call Alphabet to the microphone, and you can certainly give an overview of where we are and answer any questions the committee may have.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for having me. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm new to the Alphabet team here in Cumberland. I actually joined early November of last school year. My name is Kim Jennings. I've been part of extended day learning in my career, so I'm thrilled to be here and certainly walked into Cumberland and have had the opportunity over the last six months to meet with your administrators, know that there's been some changes in certainly empowering our team and stabilizing our team in order for us to provide an effective launch for the fall, knowing that you guys are switching up hours and have made some modifications to those times. We've certainly taken that into account. We're going to be accommodating that at all of the schools. We've employed some additional staff over the school year and fortunately over the summer that will then stay with us into the fall to help support those programs. We opened up Summer Enrollment First, which was our first piece that we opened up this year with great turnout. We have close to 100 students that are coming throughout the summer that are utilizing our program. We're going to be starting next week on Wednesday, so today being the last day of school, tomorrow being our training, Monday and Tuesday being our setup, and then starting over there at Cumberland High School with those students. And then we also opened up the fall registration, which we have had great response, but we still have capacity. One of the things that we were committed to Dr. Thornton was that we'd ensure that our capacity would continue to be open to ensure that all your students and families had a place. And right now, we're about 50% to that capacity and certainly checking it almost on the daily to ensure that we can continue to keep adding staff. Some of the things that we're doing at Alphabet that we've done, we have a retention bonus for folks that came onboard with us this year and will return with us in the fall, so hopefully that'll attract and maintain some of that consistent staff. We also are offering incentives for folks that want to work for us and then have their students or their children in our program. So we're really trying to enhance the opportunity and then staying progressive, obviously with the changing, the changing rates of pay, because I know that that's a big deal for everybody, you know, myself included, as the economy changes, trying to be progressive there as well. So I hope that at some point, as we get closer to the start of the school year, I can come back and give you a more formal update on where we're at and then certainly share some of the great things that we're going to be doing over the summer. So that's just a little bit. I know you guys might have some questions, and I'm certainly more than happy to answer those. Yes?
Mr. Collins?
Turn my computer on. Thank you for coming this evening. I received, Mr. DeMonica received an email as well from a constituent, and I'll just read it verbatim. Good morning. I'm wondering if there has been a new contract, if there has been a new contract with Alphabet for this upcoming school year? The answer is yes. Her question is, I'm hoping maybe the concerns that myself and several other families had regarding being charged for full weeks when there is two or more days of schools closed have been or can be addressed.
Of course, of course. So speaking of our school year pricing, how we look at our school year pricing is we look at the school year. So however many days that your school is in session, and then we break our costs over the weeks that school is open. So sometimes it's 36, 37, 39, and we break them into even costs there. We do not charge for the vacation weeks, so when Christmas is shut down February unless a parent opts into those, into those days, there wouldn't be a charge for those times. But when a holiday does fall on a week, you know, it's standard industry practice that that is a piece of the cost that is there. We do, if families have unique situations, we certainly do entertain that to ensure that it's, you know, we want to be affordable and we want to ensure that, you know, families understand. We do put out a newsletter at the start of the school year, and this year, it definitely will highlight some of those items, because I did hear that as I came onboard and sought some feedback around different things and making sure that parents are aware of that right up front so that they can ask those questions in advance, so it doesn't come as a shock. But for the second piece for the summer, I know that there were some questions, but us starting next week on Wednesday, we, our start date's Wednesday, so families would only be, we start on Wednesday and then we progress into the summer. So when our start date happens midstream, then we do adjust at that point as well. And then we did make some accommodations this year for families that might have had to be out for COVID. We did offer a COVID credit this year for those folks. Certainly, if somebody has an extended illness or some sort of changes, we're open to all of those pieces. So definitely valuable feedback, especially as I've joined Alphabet, I want to hear those things and understand, because we're here to provide a program and a support, and definitely want to make sure your families know about that up front, myself included. As a family, myself, you know, it's always, as you're building your budget, you need to understand that. So hopefully, that answers your question, and I can certainly post those prices out, and I will share that welcome letter with you guys, with those bullet points, so that you can provide that back to those families as well. Of course. Yes.
Mr. DeMonica?
Hi. I originally was the one that asked for you to come in. The biggest thing that I'm seeing posted on Facebook and other areas and people calling and emailing is that there isn't enough room at Alphabet. And I'm concerned about that with all the construction that we're doing around this district, that parents are being, their children are here, but they live down the other end of town, and they need daycare issues before and after, but they're claiming there isn't enough room. Now, you had said we're at 50% enrollment right now. Is it 50% district-wide or is it 50% towards each school? How can you break that down for us?
So 50% at each school. I think what I've heard from families is that there are some residual effects from last year, when there were wait lists, where there were some challenges. So I think that there's some rumblings there, because families had called me and said, I need to get into the program, but I'm on the waitlist. We reopen that every year, the families that are on our waitlist, we always ensure that they're available, folks that are in our program, you know, have first right to enroll. So folks, you know, we have it up on the website. I'm happy to share that out. Families can register now. It was a little bit later, only because we did summer first and then the second round, but right now, we have complete and open availability. And I don't anticipate having a challenge, just based on the numbers that I'm seeing right now. Community is our highest site, and we still have over 50 seats available in the after-school and the opportunity to expand. So the wonderful piece that Natalie has been working on is with the state licensing, is that if we do have to increase, we've met with all the principals, we met with them the last about 30 days of school to say, hey, with the changes in hours, we might need more space in the morning, we could particularly need a classroom in the afternoon, and all of them want to be able to service the families and children, and especially with the moves, being aware that some families are going to be going to different places.
Okay, that was my second question about contacting the state, so.
Yes.
I just want to get ahead of it before we need to.
They were actually in this afternoon, believe it or not, last day of school, came to visit us at Ashton, just to make sure that we were prepared for the fall. We do have a great relationship with Ally, who is our state licenser. She's come here already to ensure that this space is ready to go for the fall based on the capacity. So we're trying to get ahead of it. We're unfortunately, I think, last year was a little bit behind. We certainly made it work and were sustainable, but we want to be way ahead of it this year.
Right. Thank you for coming in.
Mr. Fiorello?
Hello. Thank you for coming in. A lot of concerns from BF Norton families and Garvin families that with this change of start times, they're having a hard time trying to figure out how they're going to get to work and get their kids to school. And there had been some talk of you expanding your hours. Can you just talk about that maybe?
Absolutely. We're expanding our hours to meet the changing hours of the school. So if the schools have shifted 45 minutes, we've shifted as well. So if it was an 8:15 school, now we're going to be staying open till 8:45 or 9 o'clock. So we're shifting and accommodating all the changes across the district on the front end and the back end of the.
So would parents, people still drop off their students at the same time they are now?
Absolutely. 7 o'clock opening time at all of the schools, and then we'll remain open until the first bell and the students go off.
Any change in price?
No change in price.
Okay.
Prices remaining flat as the same prices as we presented in the contract. So we just moved the.
That's huge.
Times to accommodate, you know, the changes.
All right, thank you.
And that's on the back end as well, so even if it's changed a little bit, we've accommodated that too.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about what goes into hiring, you know, what you're looking for and what the goals are in your team with the structure?
Of course. So as I mentioned before, Natalie, who's sitting behind me, Natalie is the area manager here for Cumberland. She oversees all the programs and the operations day-to-day. Her role is full-time, working collaboratively with the schools and ensuring that we have our staff on the table. One of our sites has a site coordinator. We traditionally like to have that as a person that's in the morning and the afternoon, but that person is, has a higher leadership role. They're responsible for curriculum, working directly with the parents, kind of having that day-to-day operations. And then we have group leaders, which are our teaching staff. So if you almost look in a classroom, you have your lead teacher, and then you have their extra support, and that's what our group leaders are, and then we have group leader assistants. The state requires us to have minimum requirements for every role, so site coordinators, a certain amount of schooling and experience, group leaders a little bit less, but again, still experience. And then our assistant group leaders tend to be our high school students or in fact are people that are just kind of, they want to work with children, but they haven't had the experience. So we, we obviously are open to that. One thing that we focused on as a team this year is training and ensuring that folks have the information upfront and ongoing so that they are empowered to do their jobs. That was a big piece for me, coming into the organization, to ensure that that kept going. We've made the commitment for summer, all of our training is in-person to make sure that our staff are getting the proper training, and then the same thing will happen for our fall training as well. And that, that training is a whole host of pieces that is specific to Alphabet, but then safety and, you know, all of those different pieces that just ensure our kids are in safe situations. And, you know, mentioning as far as who we look for, we want, we look for people that want to be engaged with children and want to have a good time. I think part of it, some of the challenges that we experience is that people might say they want to be with children, but then they come in and they sit down, and, you know, you have to be engaging. These children need this right now. As a parent myself, I have a 12 and a 15-year-old, and they just want, they want to have somebody there. It needs to be that, and, you know, that's what we've been promoting, is healthy, fun environments. And we do have difficult jobs, but to have fun with children, you know, that's, you know, that's minimum expectation, safe, fun, engaging, and Alphabet provides the rest. So we're really looking for those folks, and it has been a challenge. Staffing, when I joined Alphabet or just in general, industry has been hit really tough. And, you know, folks, it was one thing to get folks that wanted to work, then it was another thing to get them to come into work and then to be there for the children. And for us, it's, you know, that's important. It's a critical element to these children's lives and their moments, and so we've kind of moved with it, and we've been flexible to, you know, to bring folks in and, you know, be flexible with their schedules, but certainly expecting them to provide the children and the families what they've signed up for. So.
If I could just ask Boa a question. Could you give us a little bit of a description of how you manage special needs and the inclusion of those students in what you do for them and the families?
Of course. So inclusion, this year, I just joined Alphabet, as I mentioned, in November, and we developed a partnership with Kid, which is, we can do it together, which is an opportunity for our staff, because we don't have the resources day-to-day where, you know, we can just call on somebody to say, gosh, we're struggling with this child. They either, they're having an issue with migrating in the group, or perhaps they have some challenges. Now we have a, an organization that we can work with collaboratively that focuses on our staff to help them in those situations. So I'll give you, for instance, we have a child that comes in, they're challenged with transition, they're challenged with a thousand different things, you know, and we're able to reach out to this resource, provide them with details that ultimately they come back to us with accommodations in our program. Our biggest thing is, we want kids to be safe and we want the staff to be safe, so if we can ensure those, making accommodations is something that we've been really trying to do. And understanding that a child has changed over the last two years. A lot of children, they just need additional supports, and looking at our programs too and providing that as well. If it's more recess time, if it's the children, there's more access to different activities, if that child needs to have a snack right when they come in. So looking at those things and then working with the schools to try to understand that piece. One of the big pieces we focused on this year too was PBIS, or our social-emotional piece, really talking to the schools around, how does it work during your school day? How can we translate that in the afternoon? Consistent language, but focusing on the child. We make every effort to try to include every child, as long as it's safe. You know, I've been at many conversations where we just talk to families, how do we make sure that your child is safe, my staff, the staff are safe, and the other children are safe as well? So that's one piece that will morph and certainly be a part of what we do as we transition and train.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Collins?
I do one quick question. What is the, I think this is a state mandate, but what is the staff-to-student ratio?
It's one to 13 is the, is the minimum requirement with two staff on-site at all times. So even if you have our smaller programs where there might be a dozen children, you'll always see two staff for safety purposes as well.
Thank you.
All right. I think all of our questions have been answered. This was really helpful. Thank you for taking the time to come and give us this update, and we look forward. You said that there were some things that you were going to share with us, so.
Absolutely. I'd like the opportunity as we get into the summer and then come back in before the school year to empower you guys with that information. So as we transition through the year, you guys are able to, you know, speak to your. And if there's specific things that just seem, if I've said it here tonight, then and it's conflicting, I want to know that so that we can address it right away. So I'm happy to always be here. I'm happy to present and certainly provide any reports that are necessary.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve amended fiscal year '23 school budget resolution, SCR 2022-03.
Madam Chair, as you know, the town council a few weeks back did finalize the budget for the next fiscal year, and with that comes now our task to balance our budget. In your packets or on your drives, you'll see our recommended changes to the budget to balance. So Mr. Pignato will take you through the recommendations, and then we're certainly going to engage with you in a discussion and answer questions you have and make any changes you want to make. So, Mr. Pignato, please take them through the recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I handed out a sheet that hopefully will be a little bit easier for you to follow than the resolution and that we put in the drive. So if you look at the sheet that I handed out, it shows the $77,405,052. That was the budget we submitted to the town itself. So from there, as you know, we asked for a number of things from the town. We asked for a million eight, a 4% increase. We asked for a master lease. We asked for our capital money. We asked for a hedge. We asked for them to provide for lost revenues with some of their ESAA dollars and did not get all of that, so thus, we're back here.
Mr. P., I'm sorry. Could you go to the podium with your sheets? We can get you on the recording as well. Thank you.
Okay. So the $77,405,052 is the budget that we submitted. It was, we probably asked for almost $3 million in various sources from the town and didn't get them all. So the town appropriation, we asked for a million 882, and we ended up with a million 353, so a reduction of $529,256, which we've incorporated here. The CTE tuitions, we've talked about this a number of times. We think that we're going to have additional students enrolling from other districts to take advantage of some of the programs we're offering. I think the last time we checked with the high school people, that number was about 60 people. I haven't checked with them recently, but, and that would relate to about $350,000, depending on where they come from, because the number's different, but it's an estimate, and we'll see what, we'll see, we think it's a safe estimate. The next number, state aid. State aid, our original budget included the 748 that was excluded from us last year through an error. It includes that 748. It also included $519,000, as you know. Excuse me. The aid follows students, and we had a growth in students, so that 519 represented a growth in our student population. Well, we're actually going to get another 550,000 on top of that, so you see that reflected. So our new school aid number will be 22,263,000. So that 50254 is that number. The existing leases, some years ago, when the town used to give us $400,000 a year for building repairs, when the town had a financial difficulty years ago, they stopped providing that money. So somewhere along the line, we were able to get Mayor Murray to pick up some of our capital leases and stuff to replace that. So those capital leases now are up over $800,000. So this $174,000 is an increase in the cost that the town will be paying next year on leases for us. And you see it on both sides, because the town actually reimburses us for that cost. So you'll see the 174 on both sides of this sheet on the revenues and the expenditure side. The education fund balance, we had $540,000 in the budget to pay for the ride required curriculum with the state aid and other things we're getting. We feel we don't have to use that money, and we're going to leave it where it was. And the last two items, I kind of talked about a little bit when we, some of the things that we asked for the town, we didn't get the, we didn't get the ESAA money. We had asked for ESAA money to replace lost revenues we had from the last couple of years. Alphabet, for example, pool rentals, people who rent our gyms for a Alphabet, for example, pool rentals, people who rent our gyms for various reasons. Over a couple of year period, that was 263,000. The mayor did not include that in the budget. And we've had that hedge in the budget for a couple of years. The mayor didn't feel he could include it because he's using quite a bit of one-time sources himself and didn't want to draw down anymore in case he had to. So we did get the master lease that we asked for, 266,000, and we did get the capital for 300,000. And we got the million, the million 353 on, on the town appropriation. So all in all, we got, you know, over a million eight. So I mean, it, it, it was, you know, a pretty good year from town resources. On the, on the appropriation side, you see the same 77,405,052. That was our starting point. And, excuse me, the first reduction we have is the curriculum in the assistant superintendent's office. That's now all going to come out of ESSA. And so we've reduced it out of, out of the assistant superintendent's office, a $400,000 reduction. The next item was we've added 3.2 teachers at the high school for sections. I had put $150,000 in there for an estimate. We had a number of teachers this year that we paid 1.2 and there were six or seven of them and I took the value of that money and I had that in the budget. Well, now we know we're hiring 3.2, we know what the cost is. So the difference was only an addition of 48,239 from the 100, from the 150 I had in there. The high school overages, I had 100, 100 plus thousand in for high school overages. Now that we have the 3.2 teachers, I don't think we'll have as many overages. So I've reduced that somewhat by 50,000. McCourt, we had middle school positions, five positions that I think Dr. Thornton has talked about a number of times, go into a different schedule. I don't know if you want to add anything at this point, Dr. Thornton, about that or...
No, I think we'll hold that for questions.
Okay. A reduction of a custodian at Gavin. We feel with Gavin moving here this year and having a number of custodians in this building already, for a one time, a one-year reduction we can make in that, in that custodian here. Next year, when Gavin opens up again, you'll have to, you'll have to bring that custodian back. Buses, we've reduced the budget by a couple buses, hopefully, $100,000. Fringe benefits have, have been reduced by 77,549, but two of the fringe benefits, that was in, that was in pension and payroll taxes. But our buyback and unemployment, we've increased a little bit by 20 and 30. So it's a net reduction in fringes of about 47,549. We had, we put some additional money into cybersecurity. So we think now we have enough money to absolutely do what we need to do, you know, the full boat in cybersecurity, not just training, but some of the other things that Mike is, feels that we're going to need to make sure that we, we don't have issues there. And also so that we can maintain insurance with the trust. The trust has said if certain things aren't done, that they won't be providing cybersecurity. So it's important that we do those things and ought to have that, you know, to have that type of coverage in our personal property and liability insurance. The existing master lease, you see that 174,831 is what I talked about in the existing leases. It's on both sides. We mentioned that up above in the revenues. And then the last number we, that breakage, it's an increase to breakage, actually a minus 30 actually increases our breakage, went from 521 to 551. The number in this year's budget was 554. So it's about the same as last year. And that gives you the same 76,697 on both sides.
Madam Chair, I would just add, I know in fiscal, we did talk about, this is really to us, a multi-year budget strategy. So while we may always think about budget a year at a time, we're really mindful of, of the next couple of years as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions and have a discussion.
Ms. Smith? Thank you. The first question I have, the buses you're saying two, but if I recall earlier meetings that we've had in the year, you say the cost of one bus is approximately 75,000 for, for the year. So are we talking about just reducing the runs for two buses or...
Well, we'll see. We, we talked with Durham every week and they're working on that for us. But even if we were to reduce a couple of buses, they still have some fixed costs towards those buses. And so some of that, and that hasn't been determined, but some of that we should probably pay back. They still have certain fixed costs on leases on those buses and the rest of it. So we've just put a number in, $100,000 for a discussion point. I don't know what that number would actually come out to. Hopefully it come out a little bit better, but I wanted to be, I want to caution on the side of being conservative.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of statements to make in relation to some of these changes. I'd like to wait for my colleagues here if they have questions and come back if I could.
Other questions or comments? I mean, I know at our last meeting, Dr. Masterson was here. We talked about the McCourt, the reducing of five positions at McCourt. And of course, you know, what Dr. Masterson said was, we actually need more teachers, not fewer teachers, but he has been part of this planning process. And those are questions that we asked him last time to ensure that, you know, that he was part of this. And while it's certainly not the outcome he would like, he understands how we got to where we were. So that was, that was important for me personally to know that. Dr., Dr. Collins, Mr. Collins.
Don't give me any more credentials, just Mr. You know, I think it's very important for the public to understand, I'm not even going to go down the, we're giving almost $4 million to BVP, even though I just, even though I just did. But I think it's very important to understand that, you know, these cuts don't happen in a vacuum where we, we just, you know, the committee or Alex or Dr. Thornton want to just cut things. Again, our original budget was what, a better million four higher than this and we had all of these things accounted for. So the town gives us our budget and they have financial constraints. We get that. So we have to now whittle this down before the end of the month. And none of this is anybody, anybody, anything anybody up here wants. So we also have to consider that we have budget projections over the next three years that give us an operational deficit that we have to begin to address now. So we have to consider when adding positions or anything like that, what we're going, how that's going to impact this, not just next year, but three years down the road. So this is kind of the new way we, not the new way we started looking at things, but this is one thing we've had to consider because every year we're in a deeper hole and if we don't begin addressing that now, the cuts we have to address next year, two years, three years down the road are going to be drastic. So this is a bitter pill, I guess, to swallow, but you know, this did, as I mentioned before, this did pass fiscal subcommittee two to one. So this is not something anybody wants. It's not ideal like any of these budget seasons, but this is the best of the worst, or the worst, I don't know, the best of the worst. So options available. So thank you, Mr. Pignano, for presenting not only now, but earlier to the subcommittee.
I wanted to ask, with the, you know, mentioning the elephant in the room of BVP, with their proposed, thank you, I couldn't think of the word, expansion, how will that impact our budget? Have we done projections on that?
Right now, they haven't been approved for an expansion, so that hasn't occurred. But as far as expansion, we pay attention to the enrollment and I have no, no data this month on what's projected for next year, but we're not, I believe we're paying 3.78 million to BVP, if that's correct. But I, I can come back to you next meeting with the numbers, but I believe we are, we are leveling out as far as the student draw, but I can bring those numbers to you on July 15th.
Thank you. And just, I just, I, I know that Mr. Collins mentioned it as well and several of us have mentioned it in the past, but we wouldn't have any budget issues if we had that 3.7 million. So, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Dr. Thornton, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Cumberland schools outperform BVP, at least, you know, if you consider Rycast to be the, where did we, where did we perform, where did we stand in relation to BVP last year?
That's a Mr. Demana question, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Demana in the podium. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I was going to ask...
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair in the committee. So yeah, BVP was outperforming us. Let's see, I came into the position, I think in November of 2014, that first year when we reported out that, that winter, BVP was outperforming Cumberland. But from that following year on, both in ELA and math, we've overall outperformed their schools. The one area where BVP would say that they've been outperforming Cumberland as a whole is in the subgroup of the L population. And that was true for a while. And so, you know, we've got some, some work to do there, but overall, our, our performance has been better than, than BVP's. We've, we've, we've gone in an upward trajectory and they've kind of gone in the inverse.
Thank you very much. I think that's very important for people to understand when they, you know, I think, I hope people understand charter schools were designed for, to address underperforming school districts to give parents an option. There are many people agree with school choice. If schools are underperforming, parents should have a choice. But the public schools that all our tax follows are going towards are outperforming the charter school that was designed to accommodate parents who have underperforming school districts. Our public school district is outperforming the charter school. So when parents are considering where they're going to send their school next year or down the road, that's a very important distinction to make.
Mrs. Feather?
And just again, to add on to that as well, thank you, Mr. Collins and thank you, Mr. Demana. We're, we're outperforming them with less hours too. I mean, we, you know, we, our, our kids are not in school until 5:00 PM or, you know, and we are not teaching to tests. We are teaching holistically and we are also teaching every special needs student. And you know, special needs students, including students that they might have sent back to us because they are not equipped to handle those students. So I'll point that out.
And as we enter an election year, we have to also be asking and pressing on our elected officials, there are some things that are out of our control that do need to change from the state funding formula to how charter schools are funded, to unfunded state mandates, to the cap on, the 4% cap on tax increases for community. So you know, Mayor Mutter will, will, you know, will state that there are some things that are out of Cumberland, that are out of Cumberland's control that are at the state level. And as we look at what's happening, you know, in the next election cycle and even right now with our elected officials, I think we need to put some pressure on them too, to, to raise these issues at the state level. I think, Ms. Smith, we can go back to you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I've talked about this in the fiscal subcommittee as well and I'm going to say it here as well. When we first looked at moving the boundaries and moving students between North Cumberland Middle School and McCourt Middle School, it was to balance the size of the classes. I, I know that caused a lot of controversy in many different ways and I, I thank Mrs. Feather and Mr. Dematica for spending the time looking at that and trying to come up with some solutions to it. It was then taken off the table. The thought had been that it was too late and it would be a major change and we're coming to the end of the school year. We're already planning for next school year. So the decisions have been to look at what's happening at McCourt, increasing the size of the classes while reducing the teachers by the five positions that has been discussed. I applaud Dr. Thornton and Dr. Masterson and Mr. Pignano for all the work in trying to come up with solutions to do that. Coming out of COVID, we all know about learning loss and if there's one area in our town that probably has seen a higher reduction of loss, it is coming from our southern part of the town where the students are just trying to balance life, a lot of them with their families. People are going back to work. There's so much cumulative work to be done. And when I, when I look at that, I have a difficult time saying, let's increase our class sizes with the students that would be better in those smaller classroom sizes. So I understand and appreciate that we have to save the money now. We are going to be in critical states going forward, but as Dr. Masterson said, there's more of a need to bring in teachers. If we take the five away this year, we are going to have to bring back quite a few next year. We cannot sustain classroom sizes of 27 students when these students really have come a long way. We've seen it in the safety protocols that have been put into place. We've seen it with different presentations that Dr. Masterson has made and how he and his team are approaching and trying to help through those difficult years, those tween years that are happening. I wish we could find a different way to save the money so that we do not have one group of students impacted to this level versus trying to find a way to maybe put off some things that are really nice to have and it would be fantastic to have them and it would bring us up to state of the art, but maybe we don't need to do it all at this time. I, I mentioned the screens and, and the things that we had approved at the last meeting. Do we need to bring them into the level that we are or can we slowly introduce those into the high school and the middle schools as we go forward in smaller pieces and use some of those funds to keep at our students and keep at the education? The other thing that I, I will not, I do not support, and this is more so the reason why I did vote against this in the subcommittee, the fiscal subcommittee, is the busing. I understand that part of the busing and it's always a need to save and I appreciate that we need to save funding. However, we have in place and set a precedence this year, we are, we are busing from several different after-school programs or before-school program places. And some of those also take care of our special needs students or our IEP students where they are a much more structured environment with the child is better suited. And this is nothing against Alphabet at all. I have zero issues with the services that you're providing. It's just from parents and their needs of their children. Cutting these buses and not being able to know until August whether or not there could be an issue or there would be busing from these places that we're doing it at this year, I think it's too late to make, to make changes to next year, school year of cutting those buses back from those places. I agree, private businesses should try to find solutions and find ways, but when we are sitting here not being able to manage our own supply chain and getting our own vehicles that we need and having such a long delay in this, knowing that these businesses are going to have to get their license and get the right vehicle, get their right drivers, apply to the state, it's just too late in the game for that. And I, I would really not support cutting buses that could have anything to do with these before and after-school programs that are out there this year for this coming school year. Certainly, we can approach it early in this coming school year to say, we will never guarantee this going forward. You should be looking and getting your own businesses up and running. And that's for all of them because we're doing it with the why they have their own buses, the, the Boys Club, we're busing with them and then plus a couple of other private businesses. So I just, I'm having a hard time knowing that this could be a problem for many parents. Mr. Collins?
I do, I do have a question though. Shinebright's a for-profit organization, right?
It absolutely is, but it's one that we're providing buses to now and we're going to make a change on a one-year business. And it's not just Shinebright. I mean, we've got the Boys Club. Are we stopping the Boys Club?
But the Boys Club's a nonprofit organization, as is, you know, the other ones you mentioned. So I, that's, that's the only distinction I would make. So I mean, I kind of get that, that the parents are very happy with their services and we've, we've already had this discussion privately. But a nonprofit organization, and we already have a contract with Alphabet, a private organization has the right to buy their own busing, isn't that...
That is correct. That is absolutely correct. And I, I fully support stating just that. You need to make those arrangements as a private business, but not for this upcoming school year where it's too late to get it. How long have we been waiting now? We, we never got our John Deere equipment in that we were supposed to have in, because there were supply chain issues. We were looking at the new vehicle that we need for moving things around, the van or whatever. We still don't have that. Now we're going to say that to the private business now that we have been providing this service to. this service to, that we provided this service to for the last year. And we're going to make that change. They're going to have to apply to the state, they're going to have to get the right licensed people, they're going to have to get a vehicle. And it's not the business that's going to suffer, it's our students that are going to suffer. I just don't want to put another change on these families and on these parents that I find that we need longer planning time. If we needed longer planning time to move our boundaries between our two middle schools, why aren't we looking at the longer planning time for these elementary students and their parents to make the right decisions?
Okay, I see a lot of people with their, ready to go. Dr. Thornton would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then we'll go to Mrs. Feather and then to Mr. Collins.
Just a few quick thoughts first. In terms of busing for the committee, we could not cut any funding out of the busing line, but I would still tell you, in the month of June, we cannot promise a busing route to a daycare. We can't even finish our own runs, so we can't promise that. In August, what we do do is, as we have space available, we do approve and work with different places to get people from point A to point B. Just like in August, we approve waivers for students to go from school A to school B, but to promise a bus run for a daycare in June would be hamstringing us. Having said that, we did communicate with Shine Bright, I believe a few weeks ago, that we said, we do know already, based on geography, we can accommodate them for Cumberland Hill to Shine Bright. We know that right now, that's a given. But other things, we just don't know. We did also have a conversation about, I believe, one mini bus from the southern part of the town that has room on it, so that's a yes already. So as we get information, we can share it, but I would caution the committee to approve transportation for a daycare when we don't have our own house in order yet. As far as the flat panels, you did approve those, so those are already in route. So that's kind of water under the bridge as far as the flat panels.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Feller?
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify, we do have other programs that bus their own students, right? Like, does McCall Y?
I believe two in town have their own transportation.
Yeah, because I, my children took the McCall Y and I don't remember that that was in the Cumberland budget. They do their own, okay. So I totally see the point. I absolutely see the point, but I'm concerned about the finances as well, which is kind of funny for me because, you know, me with buses. But yeah, it's tough, I'm sorry.
Mr. Collins and then Mr. Fiorello.
I just have a question. Do we know what Shine Bright's enrollment is?
I do not have that.
I have seen the numbers.
All right. Okay, I was, it was just offhand.
Cumberland Hill is really their bread and potatoes.
So Cumberland Hill's their meat and potatoes or bread and butter?
Yeah, thank you.
So it sounds like that likely will be addressed, but I'm also hearing that Alphabet is making efforts, which we have a contract with, is making efforts to expand their enrollment. So busing would be a moot point if people could just do it in-house. I understand people are happy, but, you know, it's like if you're not happy with the public schools and you want to go out and go to a private school, you got to pay for that. You know what I mean? And that's kind of, and in a perfect world, we'd like to be all things to all people, but I just, with the budget right now and, you know, the three-year plan, we have to, we, our priority has to be people we have contracts with, our priority has to be our students and our teachers and then the people we have contracts with and our vendors. And then if we had money left over, I just don't see a situation where we have any money left over.
And Ms. Smith? And I, I agree with you. We shouldn't, we're looking at the three-year plan. I'm not talking about a three-year plan for this. I'm talking about making the change, making those announcements and making sure that these other businesses are going to make their own arrangements. And when we look at it, it should be all of them, not just let's do for-profit, nonprofit, it's, let's make sure that they're all getting out there and doing what they need to. If our contract is with Alphabet, we should be supporting Alphabet only. But we've already have that, we've already set the precedence, these people have already done it. And my understanding is there is a big uptick from Garvin parents for the services as well. So I don't know the numbers. There have been a lot of calls and discussions on it for as far as Shine Bright goes. You know, there's others in the town that we bus with. I just would like to see if we're going to do some kind of busing saves or something else. I'd like to see how we are going to do that before just approving this and seeing a blanket number saying, oh, we're going to save $100,000, but we won't know until August where it's going to come from or how we're going to do it. I just would like to see more because the only discussions that we've had so far was the call from one of our businesses in town to say, we just want to confirm about the bus routes, to be told, we're not doing that. So that's just my thought, I just, I just don't feel comfortable doing this to parents, to students and taking them away from their comfort zones. We have enough going on.
Mr. Fiorello?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a practicality issue. We cannot have a bus that's already on the southern end of town drive, pick up the kids at BF or even drive all the way over to the north end of town to go back and start their routes on the southern end of town and get them to school. It's just not practical. What we have to look at is more finding out which daycares are in the areas, geographic areas of each school and make those kinds of arrangements. It's not practical to have, like Garvin, even though Garvin's up here, the bus is already, in a normal time, you'd have, the bus is coming from, say, let's say, McCourt, drop, you know, they're going from McCourt to the neighborhood to pick up the kids, to take them to school. They can't pick up kids, drive to the north end of town and then come back here. Those kids are going to be on the bus for an hour.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, Garvin is one of the last schools to start and last schools to end this coming school year. We've moved that time and we're talking about a bus for half a mile. According to Dr., well, according to Dr. Thornton, the, there is a special needs student that we must accommodate coming from the BF area.
Right, and that's going to happen, right, and that's going to happen.
So BF is going to happen. So it's the Garvin school that has the biggest impact and they're going to be here and the parents want opportunities.
I think personally that we, we don't have the facts in front of us about how many, we don't know the enrollment at Shine Bright, we don't know where they're coming from with school, from which area of town. Dr. Thornton has already said we're accommodating Cumberland Hill, which we think is the highest population going to Shine Bright. We have the special bus that Dr. Thornton has already acknowledged and I think we're doing a lot of things to try to fix this, but we also know that, that we do have an in-house, as Dr. Collins, Dr. Collins, Mr. Collins said. And I, I think we're, I think we're doing the best that we possibly can.
Right. And the other thing is that we can't look at it just as helping Shine Bright, which is, you know, a wonderful program run by people that really care. But the fact is, is that they're not the only ones. So you'd have to have a bus really just doing daycare runs because it wouldn't be just, you know, Garvin neighborhoods or, say, picking up at Shine Bright and then going to whatever the school is. It would also have to go to every single other daycare in the town. We'd have a situation like a community school where the last tier, those kids are never getting to school on time or they're never getting to home on time. And then we'll start getting all the complaints from parents that their kids are on the bus for over a half an hour to an hour. It's just not practical. And it's quite honestly, of all the things that we can be spending money on, like mental health, I, I'm sorry, but buses to daycare centers is not high on my list.
There was a lull in the conversation, so I would like to make a motion to pass SCR 2022-03.
Second.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to pass the approved amended fiscal year 23 school budget resolution, SCR 2022-03. We have a second by Mr. Fiorello.
Madam Chair, I have a discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. DeMonica?
As I said at the last meeting, Madam Chair, I would move to cut the line item where we're paying charter school students to go to BVP and put that money back in the Cumberland School District and let RIDE pay the bill for BVP. I understand we've gotten legal advice that they will just step in and take the money, but is it this year, is it next year, the year after, that we don't have the money to pay them? I mean, we're, we're doing something at the detriment of our own children here. We're cutting away people, five people at McCourt, other things that we need to do such as mental health in this district, we're not doing, you know, to the extent that we really want to do it. And if someone has the nerve of move to amend Mr. Collins' motion and cut $3.8 million from the line item for BVP and put it back in the Cumberland Public Schools lines.
But that makes no sense, quite honestly, because we take the money, what are we going to do? We're going to hire all these teachers and then the state will withhold all the funding and we'll have to lay off all those teachers. But then, we won't be able to lay them off because they'll have to stay on the books for the entire year. It makes no practical sense. I understand what you're saying, but our argument should be with the state and not with screwing up our own finances just to make a point.
Dr. Thornton?
Mr. Prignano, a little clarification. Can you explain to the committee how we actually pay our share for BVP each year? Is that in the operating budget or something that's paid from the state right to BVP?
No, the payment to charter schools is part of the operating budget. And, you know, and I, you know, just personally, I think we need to do a better job in letting what Tony DeMonica just said tonight about how we do better than their schools so people want to come to our schools rather than the charter school. And I think when we're done with the construction, between outperforming them and having better looking schools, we should start seeing a reduction in those numbers, I would hope. That's always been, Bob Mitchell and I talked about that and that's, that was why we thought we should focus on the elementary schools so much with the construction. But the $3.8 million is part of the operating budget. So.
So it's in the budget?
In the budget. So they would withhold our state aid.
I'm aware of what will happen. I think everybody is aware of what happens. So Mr. DeMonica, as I understand it, has made a motion to alter the budget on the payment side to not pay BVP. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct and put it in the operations side of our schools.
So he has made a motion to amend the budget in that regard. So the way it would work is if someone seconds that. Oh. If no one seconds it, it, the amendment dies.
Can we go back to the original motion? Because we have a motion.
We have a motion to approve.
Okay.
Now we have a motion to amend that to remove whatever the amount is to BVP and it needs to be seconded. Well, it doesn't need to be seconded, but in order to be voted on, it needs to be seconded. If it is not seconded, the motion to amend dies. If it is seconded, the motion to amend is voted on and it either wins or loses based on what you people do.
Okay. So Mr. DeMonica makes a motion to amend the budget, to reduce it by the amount, the BVP, the payment to BVP, the full amount.
3.8 million, 3.78 million.
So he makes a motion to amend the budget. Do we have a second? Okay, so that motion fails. So we go back to our original, we have a motion and a second. Second for discussion. Yep.
I think the, this is, even though this BVP issue originated in Cumberland, it's a state issue now. And obviously, many of the people who helped create BVP are holding elected office now and there's an election in November, or I guess it was a primary before that. And so even though this is our issue locally, this has to be addressed at the state level. Our hands are tied. We all agree we want our $3.8 million and I understand, but I don't think we can run the risk of getting into a legal fight over money because at the end of the day, it'll affect our children, our children, our students, our teachers, it'll affect teaching and learning, it'll become a distraction. It is my sincere hope that this becomes a campaign issue going into the fall, so perhaps it will be addressed at the state level. You know, we also know there's been pushes for funding formula change, spearheaded by Senator Pearson in the state senate. From what I understand, it keeps dying in the general assembly. So hopefully, people who are running in an election year, perhaps candidates will come forward or people who are currently in office and will go on the record as saying, we have to pass this funding formula issue because it keeps, it seems like it's dying on the vine. We've been hearing about it, there's been a lot of press about it. Cumberland has really taken a hit on this and we're outperforming the very school we're paying. So at the state level, if that's where the solution is, people have to call their state lawmakers and address this because we have more cuts coming in the next couple of years unless we get very creative. We could have these things now, we could have the more buses. Back in, you know, the mid-winter or whenever, maybe late fall, we were having debates over busing and, you know, expanding walking distances and it came back, lack of money. We could have a lot more services in place if we could address this very issue. We'd be having a quite different conversation. So I like the spirit of what Mr. DeMonica is lobbying for, but I just don't think we have that authority and I, and I think it would affect the most vulnerable here in Cumberland right now, but perhaps we could be having a different conversation this time next year, depending on the outcome of the election in the fall.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I am, I would like to take a roll call vote on this. So this is a motion to approve the amended fiscal year 23 school budget resolution, SCR 2022-03. And I will go in order from my right to my left. Mr. DeMonica?
No.
Mrs. Rogalski?
Yes.
Mrs. Feather?
Yes.
Mr. Fiorello?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
The chair votes yes and it passes five to two. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion and revote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. We have 16 resolutions. I know Ms. Feather wants me to read them all individually, she loves it so much. But before we begin, fiscal subcommittee, these all passed three to zero, but the, first, I would like to take number six, SCPR-06-2022-69. The original title here on the agenda says, Purchase Student Chromebooks. That doesn't match the actual resolution, so I'm going to make a motion to amend that, the call, SCPR-06-2022-69, Purchase Student Chromebook Carts slash K to 2 Hub Tech.
Okay, so Mr. Collins makes a motion to amend SCPR-06-2022-69 to say Purchase Student Chromebook Carts, grade K through 12 Hub Tech. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. DeMonica? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes seven to zero.
With that amendment, I would now make a motion to approve all 16 resolutions, which again, passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero. So I make, I move passage of the entire list of resolutions.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions one through 16 as listed here. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Thank you. The next item, discussion and revote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
We have no payment of the bills.
Thank you very much.
Tonight.
Next item on the agenda is the school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Collins?
Today's obviously the last day of school here in Cumberland. Thank you to all the teachers, faculty, support staff. This has been, I've said this before multiple times before in public here, this has been a year unlike any in my entire teaching career. You talk to a first-year teacher, what do they know? But I mean, they do talk about how hard it is, but teachers who have been teaching 30 years, it's been a rough year. I do believe next year is going to get better. Teachers are leaving the field in force. I mean, understaffing, I mean, you look at job openings, Ms. Duncanson can attest to this, I, we had a couple openings in my department. Last time we had an opening, over 100 applicants, we had 20. There's just less people going into the field, there's more people leaving the field looking for other jobs. It's, it's, I do believe it's going to get better, but, you know, that's, I'm not here to, you know, pontificate about, you know, how, what's around the corner and the crisis we're facing with staffing. But there's a reason people are leaving, it's because the burnout this year has been really, really hard. So to the students, the parents, the teachers, the support staff, get some rest this summer. We got just over two months before school starts and thank you for all you've done, all you continue to do. It was, you know, it was the frontline people who really made this work, not just this year, the last couple of years, but I think they really felt it this year. So thank you.
Any other comments from the school committee members? Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. Don't believe we have that. Thank you. Next item is adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Feather?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned at 8:23 PM. Thank you, everyone.